Good afternoon. I call to order the Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, October 23, 2024. The first order of business is the approval of the October 9, 2024 minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Do you have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The next order of business is the following new business where we will consider the petition of Timberlake Investments LLC to amend the future land use map from neighborhood commercial to medium density residential to rezone approximately 1 and 932,000 acres from B1 Limited Business District to R3 Medium Density Residential District and for a conditional use permit to allow the construction of 18 townhomes in one duplex located at 3142, 3146, and 3150 Ward's Ferry Road. Rachel.
Thank you. And before we jump into this one, I just want to make a note that I'm going to try to get through this somewhat quickly. We have our transportation engineer with us today if there are questions about traffic for this one, but we only have him till about 4:30. So I'm going to try to move quickly, but I'm happy to answer questions later as well. As mentioned, the purpose of this petition is to allow 18 townhomes, one duplex, and associated parking. This petition may sound somewhat familiar to Planning Commission. The petitioner had previously proposed 24 apartment units here, but ultimately withdrew that petition prior to city council's public hearing. The future land use map recommends a neighborhood commercial use for the two larger properties. These areas consist primarily of office, retail, personal service, and restaurant-type uses that are scaled and designed to be compatible with the immediate neighborhood. The petitioner proposes to amend the flume from neighborhood commercial to medium density residential, and these areas include smaller lots, single-family detached housing, duplexes, and townhomes at densities of up to 12 units per acre. The flume already recommends a medium density residential use for the smaller parcel at 3142 Ward's Ferry. The existing B1 Limited Business District for the properties, for the larger properties, was established in 1979, as well as the R2 Low Medium Density Residential District for the smaller parcel. The Board of Zoning Appeals approved a variance on May 30, 2024, to reduce the minimum acreage needed for a townhouse development from two acres to 1 and 900, 1.9 acres essentially. Access to the proposed development would be from Copley Place, which connects to Ward's Ferry Road just prior to its intersection with Timberlake. The transportation engineer noted that left-turn movements in and out of Copley Place would be unsafe and that Copley Place should be limited to a right-in, right-out movement only. Therefore, planning staff has suggested including this as a condition of the conditional use permit. Without this condition, we feel the access would be unsafe. The current zoning and flume would facilitate commercial development to this site, and this land use may be preferred or viewed as more appropriate just due to its close proximity with Timberlake Road, yet the properties have never developed into any sort of commercial use that is known despite being zoned this way since 1979. The proposed townhomes should serve as a transition between the commercial properties on the opposite side of Copley Place up towards Timberlake and the single household residences that are on Adams Drive to the south. The city's technical review committee reviewed this petition on September 4. The planning division recommends approval of this petition with the condition noted in the CUP.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel. Who is here to speak on behalf of this petition?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, my name is Norm Walton. I'm with Perkins Northson, representing the developer this afternoon. As Rachel mentioned, it's been a long road to get here. We've gone through numerous steps to try to make this project go forward. We've looked at apartments at this facility as it was originally too small for townhouses. City Council seemingly did not have the stomach for apartments at this location. We think townhomes actually blends well in this neighborhood. There's a mix of townhouses, duplexes, and single-family detached throughout all of Ward's Ferry Road, so we feel like that this reasonably well fits in with the neighborhood. As Rachel mentioned, this property's been marketed as commercial for a number of years with no takers, so we feel like this is the highest and best use of the property. There has been some concerns about or questions about traffic. I sent this letter to Rachel earlier this afternoon, but just to kind of run through some numbers, if we use a general office building on this site, that's a 15,000-square-foot facility, that would generate 223 trips based on the ITE Trip Generation 11th Edition manual. If we used a 20-dwelling-unit apartment building, it would generate 91 trips per day, and if it's townhouses, 20 units, 18 townhouses plus the two duplexes as we showed, it's 204 trips per day. So comparing back to the general office, the townhouses is actually a lower trip generation than even the, one of the lowest trip-generation commercial businesses. A commercial office would generate 223 trips per day. These townhomes would generate 204. We do realize there's significant issues with traffic at this intersection, multiple lefts, multiple lanes, and congestion with the high school. We would like to, you know, make it mindful that Copley is a public street. It's not an entrance, so we're, I guess, questioning and concerned about the condition of the right-in and right-out, but we understand where the city staff is on that. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those at this time.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure we might ask you to come back. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of the petition? Please come forward and state your name and if you will sign in.
I'm Bevan Alexander. And if I give you a card, do I not have to fill out all this stuff?
You can do it after the comments.
I'll do it later.
Okay.
And I wanted, because I have an array of traffic questions, I don't want to waste time filling out my name or my addresses. I'm not hard to find. So I'm an attorney. I represent Alicia Gupta and Sashi Latta, who are property adjacent in this neighborhood, right on the contiguous Tuat and front onto Adam Drive. In addition, I drive this route twice a day. My office is in Windhurst. I live in Fort Hill. I am extremely familiar with this intersection. The, while technical approval of things like the de minimisizing from 1.963 to 2 are things that can be adjusted, and while there are ideas that can be used to fix traffic problems if they're viewed in a very narrow field and a narrow scope, I believe the purpose of this planning commission is to actually impose a broader, more constructive, wider view of what's best for the development of property. And this property remained undeveloped these 40-some years since '79, probably practically before then because it's isolated. It's got bad terrain. It's in a corner that was created by the Timberlake Road intersection with the expressway. It, and I believe that the efforts to rescue this property have been frankly nothing less than contortions. So let me step out and say why I think that this is such a bad idea. So there are two lanes or more going east direction at this intersection on Timberlake Road by itself. Wardrobe was widened some years ago, and it now has three, I think, or maybe four lanes at the intersection within the last, yeah, and thank you, Rachel. So it's up here, so you can see, it's three lanes. One's a left turn, one's a through and left, one's a right turn. They, in the last five years, there's been an enormous development of rental property across the road, and that's also the roundabout exit that comes off of the 501 bypass at that point and enters in here. Schules is on one corner. More importantly, the high school is on the other corner across. So the traffic patterns on this are dense all the time, and specifically, the types of drivers that are here and the directions that need to be driven in already choke this point enough, so it's a dangerous place to drive. And one of the, while I comprehend the idea of a right-in and right-out only, the two central problems with that, one is people have to actually obey that and not in an effort to go left, pull out, and duck-hook across to go left on Ward's Ferry Road, which will happen because people are that way, but it's going to particularly happen because the only way out of there is to go into the right-turn lane on Ward's Ferry Road. That right-turn lane, if you look at this picture, and I don't have a pointer that makes this finger, but up in the upper-left-hand corner, you will see that that entrance, that right-turn lane goes right into the on-ramp of Timberlake Road. So if you want to go left from Copley Place with this right-in and right-out, you're going to have to cross at least one line of traffic that, to go out. You're going to turn right and then immediately merge left in a space that's probably less than 75 meters, maybe 100 meters, a very short, maybe shorter than that, and get into that lane, assuming that it's not already stacked full at the time you're trying to come out. The next problem is that if you pull out and go into the intersection, you have to, you will be shunted immediately onto the on-ramp, and in order to avoid that, you're going to have to cross in front of the traffic that's going straight into town on Timberlake Road in the right-hand lane, which includes not only through traffic, but traffic that's going into the on-ramp.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'm sorry, I think we have a time limit here.
Right.
It's already come and gone. Unless, unless we're going to say, if he's representing two people, does that, is that considered a group? Okay, sorry.
I've made my point. I believe it's the wrong thing to do for all these reasons. While you have the power to do it, I believe that the purpose of this commission is to use a different judgment standard.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition of the petition? If you'll come forward and make sure you state your name and sign in and keep in mind that we have a three-minute limit.
Sure.
My name's Gary Taylor. I don't reside in the immediate area. I'm a FedEx driver, so I've been traveling Ward Road for the last two years and want to say that I haven't even had an accident yet, but I've had many close encounters. So the real part that I would like to address, I learned something new today at Copy Center. If you put your age in there, they print the pages out like this and stuff. I'm like, what the heck? So my main thing is, from traveling that road so frequently, it is an issue at that intersection right above the proposed property. The right-in and the right-out, I'm not a genius or anything, so I'm just trying to walk through. It said right-in and right-out only, so I see three ways that somebody could leave that property and go towards the airport, okay, which they can do right now. They can go through the light at Timberlake with 90 other cars, go through the light, go down there, turn around, and go back down Ward's Ferry. That's option one. They can go to the light, go through 90 vehicles, get in the left lane, go down to Leesville Road, take a left, and go that way. They can do that also and cut through Heritage Parking Lot possibly, or they can get out there with the 90 cars, go to the right, get on the expressway, and go through 50 to 60 stoplights to get to the airport. Now, maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but I don't see any other way you get out of Copley Place and are able to go towards the airport on Ward's Ferry. That's the only point. So that, therefore, you're either inconveniencing anybody that's there. What do they do is the big, is the big issue. And obviously, if this property's been like, it's a tough, it sounds like they've done a whole lot of work to try to make this thing work, but from anything I see as a person in a vehicle, it doesn't make any sense. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you sign in? Oh, okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition of the petition? Okay, then the public hearing is closed, and we'll open it up to commissioners for your questions.
I'd like to just maybe get a little refresher on the differences between this plan and the one that was denied the last time it was heard. It's 2020 of August?
August 2023. So to kind of, I guess, recap how we got here, Planning Commission did have a public hearing on August 23 of last year, but to back up even further than that, the petitioner initially wanted to develop townhomes here, but they did not have enough acreage to do so. There's a two-acre minimum in our zoning ordinance for townhomes, so once they figured out that the townhomes were not going to work there, and we met, I think, a couple of times trying to figure out, could we vacate right-of-way? Could, could we look at acquiring other property somehow to get them to that, that two acres, and it just didn't work out? So because they could not do the townhomes, they pivoted to apartments, and then they ended up withdrawing that petition after a city council work session. Got some feedback from council that maybe that was not preferable. So then they received a variance. They applied for a variance from our Board of Zoning Appeals to have a lower acreage threshold. The normal amount is two acres for townhomes, and they have 1.9, 1.9 and change, so they did receive a variance for that from the Board of Zoning Appeals, but now they still have to get the conditional use permit for that, or the rezoning and the conditional use permit from Planning Commission and council. So previously, I believe it was 24 apartments that were recommended for denial. We also did not have as much information, I think, about the right-in, right-out and the potential traffic generation for other by-right uses, as Norm mentioned. So yes, planning staff and commission recommended denial of the previous rezoning petition for the 24 apartments.
I've got a question about the right-in, right-out. Would, would that involve building some kind of berm so that you're prevented from turning from the left?
Here's kind of a generic version of a, this isn't the geometry of this intersection, but some, some people call it a pork chop. It's a little raised median that would essentially channelize the traffic in and out. And there are cases where, you know, if, if there's sufficient space where the legs of the island or the pork chop can be extended to prevent that, you know, going around and just making the left. People do that at the Aldi entrance all the time on 221, making a left into what's supposed to be a right-in, right-out, but there are ways to design that to prevent that from happening.
So by putting that in, that would obviously restrict everybody going to the Restoration Hill Community Fellowship from, because I think that's the name of the church there, from turning left. I assume they do that now, but probably that's not during rush hour. That would be on a Sunday morning or Wednesday or something.
That is likely true. And I think I would add to what you're saying, any sort of B1 development that was going in here by right would likely be subject to us asking for those same improvements on Copley. So.
You could ask for it, would they be required to do that, or could they?
I believe if the issue that, or the traffic they are creating is directly attributable to what they are proposing, whether it's a public hearing or whether it's a by-right, you know, staff-level development approval, I believe they can. We have done that before. One example, I think, is Zaxby's on the other end of, I guess that's the other end of Ward's Ferry, but that was a by-right development, and that median was constructed along, along with that restaurant.
So no matter what goes in here, more than likely, there will be a, this scenario of restricting access.
Yeah.
Has that fellowship church been, I mean, do they even know the, the issue of, if this goes forward of their, their, the people coming to, to frequent this place, that their in-and-out will be changed and that they won't have the same access as they used to?
The right-in, right-out is a more recent development, so I'm guessing that conversation has, has not been had yet. Again, I would, I would offer that regardless of the public hearing, whatever would happen is, if a by-right development was coming in, it would happen regardless.
Then we, it's kind of focused on people exiting from there, but if you're entering from Timberlake, you'd have to drive past the entrance and either make a illegal U-turn or pull into a left-hand turn road and then come back out, or right-hand turn and make a left-hand turn out.
Pull into the school parking lot, yeah.
And turn around there and come back.
Yeah. The, the issue with making the left there at, at Copley is its, its proximity to the light. If they are going down to the high school entrance or even Adams Drive to make a U-turn, they're no longer in the, what's considered the functional area of the intersection. There shouldn't be, I mean, there may be sometimes, but there really shouldn't be cars stacking back that far, creating an unsafe situation. That's, that's really the, I mean, access to the site is difficult no matter what goes here, right? And the issue is because of how close it is, you're going to have cars stacking. People will leave a hole seeing someone trying to make a left, and as they make that left, there's a very high risk that traffic coming off of Timberlake is not going to see them because the cars are queued and, you know.
Were we going to hear from the traffic engineer?
Was that?
I had asked him to be here just for, if you all had specific questions, kind of with his engineering knowledge.
And I don't know if it probably doesn't have to anything to do with traffic engineering, really, but in regards to the Aldi comparison, and first of all, you know, is this something that the developer has worked with you on saying, yeah, we're going to do this? And if so, how do you ensure that we have the proper? And if so, how do you ensure that we have the proper length of curbing so that people don't go around it? I do drive that intersection a lot coming off of the expressway and cutting across. And quite often, that's a really, really busy, busy intersection. I just can't imagine being in Copley and wanting to turn left unless it's like maybe a Saturday or a Sunday. For example, when that church is there, not as difficult to get across. But how do you, how do you ensure that?
So the first question, have, have they indicated a willingness? They have not at this point, and I understand that it's a, it's, it's an extra cost to them. You know, however, I, I don't see how anyone could try to make that left and say that it, it would be safe. So that's, that's my non-engineering perspective on it. The question about how do you make sure it's built to the standards? Any work that happens in the right-of-way would have to be approved by a road water sewer plan, which is the, the, the right-of-way equivalent of a site plan. A road water sewer plan would have to be approved through the city's engineering division. The Aldi is a private driveway. However, this is a public street, so we, the, the transportation engineer and the city engineer would have the ability to say, this is how it needs to be designed.
By bar.
Yeah.
And you say they're not on board, but it doesn't go forward without just going in with it. It's written, it's written in as a proffer.
As a, well, they didn't proffer it as a condition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if, if they want to do it, they have to put this in.
Yeah, I was curious about our last meeting because I wasn't in support, but I'm actually, I lean more in support of that because I was thinking that that was included as part of the plan. You know, I think townhouses are a little bit different than apartments in that you can own a townhouse. You can promote home ownership. And then you have, I was like, traffic was a big issue the last time, I do remember that. And, and I thought that this right-in, right-out actually does make a big difference in, from my experience with that, with that area.
Yeah, when I looked it up, we unanimously voted it down last time. And I think the biggest, and, and planning, the planning department didn't believe that the apartments were a good fit for this, for this area. And I understand by right, you know, something could be put in. But I, I just, I don't know if I feel confident. And I, and I, I'm assuming, Rachel, you do feel confident that the, the right-in, right-out is enough for the planning department to believe that this, that these townhomes are a good fit for this property?
Yes, and with the understanding that it would likely be required no matter what. I do think it makes a lot of sense to have townhomes adjoining a single-family residential as a transition, more so than, you know, an office, a daycare, some more commercial use. Just from a land use pattern perspective, I, I do agree with it. And I, I think the traffic maybe not, is not ideal. It's not having, it's not ideal to not have the full access. But I think this is, just given the situation, the best that, that it can be.
I have a question about the, again, about the right-in, right-out. Would, would that be taking some land from the church property? You'd have to have, widen it. And then if you want to get in the left lane to turn left on Timberlake Road, you got to look around a lot of cars.
I think we lost the traffic engineer. I, I don't know.
Hey, Ryan. Would you mind?
You know, I don't know that we've gotten to the level of design to know whether we would need any additional right-of-way or whether this could be accomplished within the existing.
I think we could put one in there, fine. There's different detail sheets from the road design manual that we would look through and find the best option there for Copley Place. But we could put one in.
And we would take into account the, the cross, crosswalk as well.
Right.
So, yeah, it would just be a matter of figuring out the geometry and what can work there.
Maybe we could ask the developer to come up and maybe talk about the, or whoever's representing the developer, and talk about the proposed right-in, right-out?
As I mentioned earlier, we do understand the, the traffic scenario that's there. I would like you to look at that photo. I think this is on a Saturday or Sunday. There's no cars in the school parking lot. Timberlake Road is pretty busy. Ward's Ferry is not. So I think this street is like most other streets, busy streets in the city of Lynchburg. They're busy for a finite amount of time. As a large amount of traffic, it flushes out. It becomes not as busy at other, other times. But I do realize that there is a queuing situation at certain times at this, at this light. I'm not denying that, but I thought that, that photo was interesting. So, you know, to get this to move forward, I think we're in general agreement. I mean, it fits a condition. I guess as a developer or developer's representative, we can't say that we're going to refuse to do the condition. That is something that you as a body and City Council as a body imposes as a restriction on the developer. And, and it has to be accepted or it doesn't go forward on, on the developer. Developer refuses to agree to that. So the, the only thing that we would, and there's been a lot of dialogue about what's there, businesses that are there. Would that, would that triangle of concrete restrict those businesses and access to those businesses? And I think that was a good and healthy dialogue, so it's, it's a pro and con. You know, we're going to have certain people that we're going to impose negatively. But if that's what it takes to get this done, I think that we would, we're going to have to agree to that if it's added as a condition and voted on as you as a body and then advances to City Council. And City Council accepts that condition as well.
I think for me, this may be surprising to many. I was against this originally, and I'm often voting against these. But I think this is a better fit for this piece of land, the townhomes versus the apartments. And I think this restriction on traffic also makes a big difference. And the other thing about this, it's a new development. So anyone buying into it will be well aware of what they're getting themselves into. So before they purchase it or before they rent it, they will visit it and they will know it's a right-in, right-out. And so it's not something that's being added down the road. So I actually think, in, in my mind, this is, this has been, those two changes are enough to sway my, my vote.
And changing the flume, which you typically don't like to do, you're, you feel okay about that?
I think, I think it fits in with the character of the area. And if we're going to make this other change, then yeah, doing both makes sense to me. But I'm glad you raised that.
My concern is honestly the safety of the school around it, the kids that might be there. I mean, inevitably, you're going to find some uncharacteristic traffic flows. But I agree that this is probably the best use considering the situation we're presented with.
So if we, if we make a motion with the condition of the right-in, right-out, and we approve of that, like, that's how it goes forward. And, and then if it gets, I mean, that, that is a definite contingency. And if they decide not to do it, then they have to come back. Is that?
Yes, if council chooses to keep that same condition because they can add or drop or modify conditions at their public hearing. If City Council approves of that condition, then it is a requirement.
Okay.
So is it, am I correct, assuming that these are developed to be sold? Yeah. Yeah, I think, I do think it's a much better, I mean, I know y'all were here when we voted on it, and it was, I think it was a long meeting and unanimous against. And I, you know, as I read through it and looked through it, I know that, I know if I had property, I wouldn't want to foot the bill. It was like the last person sometimes has to foot the bill. I wish there was a way that things didn't work out that way. But I do think that when you're selling something, that's, that, there is value to that that gets added to the, to the unit. That's a, I, I just think, I've been through there so many times, and I've seen so many times where there's two lanes. I've seen people get hit right in front of me trying to cross because that nice person in the slow lane gave them a break. So I think this really eliminates that issue. And I think the Gupta's, that, that was one of the main things, was the traffic. And I think that does eliminate that, that extra bit of danger. So I think it addresses some major issues.
The, the fact that the church or fellowship hall or whatever doesn't, is not aware of this condition. So, I mean, not that anybody showed up to speak in, in favor or opposition, but I just wonder if they did know that that was the condition that was on the table and that all of a sudden, they were going to, you know, the people that have been coming there for years and years are not going to be able to access that space the way they, I mean, you know, would they, would they have 20 people here in opposition?
I do think that the egress on that, like on a Sunday, you know, if you say, well, I want to go to Ward's Road and eat lunch after church, you're going to get there just as fast by turning right and get on the expressway. The traffic count is slower. Ward's Road's slower. And, and so that's, I, I did think about that.
But then coming into it, and if they're, unless they're coming up Ward's Ferry Road.
Yeah, they just come a different, yeah, I think come a different, yeah, they have to come a different way, so. But people go out of the way to go to church, and that's a positive thing.
But y'all aren't worried about them not having?
Well, I mean, everything we're doing has been announced and on public record.
They've had the opportunity. And I agree with you.
And they will know about it now and come to City Council.
That's true, yeah.
If they had proposed the 15,000 square foot office, we wouldn't be here. We would still have more trips coming in. The same concern would still be there about the left, and they wouldn't even have a, an opportunity to comment on that. You know, there are instances where if so many accidents occur at a given intersection in the city, you know, the city's actually kind of obligated to go in and put the pork chop to limit, limit turning movements if the turning movements are the cause of so many accidents. So there are instances where, you know, regardless of public hearings and, and public input, that the city actually has to do something to make something safer. So definitely, I, I understand where you're, where you're coming from, but there are scenarios where it's going to happen regardless.
In light of all that, I'd make a motion that we accept it as it's written with the conditions at the bottom of our packet.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So five?
Five, yep.
Okay. Good luck at City Council. Thank you for coming in. All right, the next order of business is to consider the petition of Michael Dillard to rezone approximately 4 and 54 hundredths acres located at 2712 Concord Turnpike, 118 and 120 Spinoza Circle from R2 low medium density residential district to R3C medium dead-end city residential district conditional to allow the construction of single-family homes.
Thank you, members of Planning Commission. The comprehensive plan recommends a low-density residential use for this property. These areas are dominated by single-family detached housing at densities of up to four dwelling units per acre. And in addition to residential uses, they may include public or institutional uses compatible in scale with residential homes. This area is also covered by the Tyrean and Pleasant Valley Neighborhood Plan, which was adopted as part of our comprehensive plan in 2022. And that plan recommends supporting the development of housing types for diverse demographics, including younger families, aging population groups, et cetera. And it also recommends promoting the sustainable development of publicly and privately owned land. The subject property was annexed into the city of Lynchburg in 1976. The existing zoning was established in 1978. The submitted concept plan indicates the construction of single-family detached homes. It may be either 21 or 22 roughly homes, depending on how the stormwater management facility works out with stormwater calculations. City Water and Service, City Water and Sewer Service is available up to the proposed development in the city street. Wastewater would be handled via a sanitary force main, and each residence would utilize individual grinder pumps. The proposed development would provide housing at desirable densities that reflect good land use principles and responsible use of our limited land resources. It would join other single-family lots and would align with the recommendations in the neighborhood plan. The proposed rezoning would facilitate the construction of a residential development of, at a density of about 485 hundredths dwelling units per acre. This proffer density is similar to the uses on our future land use map, which indicate up to four units per acre and is similar to the R2 low medium density residential district, which allows a maximum density of 4.35 dwelling units per acre. The voluntarily submitted proffers should limit land use by excluding uses that would not be compatible with the surrounding area. The city's technical review committee reviewed this petition on September 4th, and the planning division recommends approval of the petition.
Thank you, Rachel. Who is here to speak on behalf of this petition? Amy, will you sign in, please?
Good afternoon, Amy Seip with AccuPoint Surveying and Design. Just to hit some of the highlights from what Rachel mentioned, this would be approximately 21 to 22 single-family homes. At this state, we haven't fully designed any kind of stormwater management. So we do have a lot reserved for that as required by a city code. But if it can be a little smaller, we could still potentially add an additional home. This would require a public, public extension. So the, the water and sewer would then become property of the city of Lynchburg and be given back within the, the same program. Sidewalks are also required with the joint city. I think it's the 50/50 match is what it is. So there'll be sidewalks throughout this neighborhood. It's, it's a rarity these days that I get to come and speak single-family to you. In the city of Lynchburg, we just don't have that many pieces that we can, we can do that. But with the rising costs of everything, in order to try to make that move forward, we have to get a few more houses in there. And what we're finding is that nowadays, most people are not wanting a huge lot to maintain. They've moved away from, you know, wanting to be in the yard and outside to maybe spending those on travel ball trips or, you know, other types of experiences. So people are less into, to yards and, and things at home and want a smaller lot, whether they be older and can't maintain it or younger families that are on, on the go more. So that's just kind of the trends that we're seeing. But like, like Rachel and I both mentioned, this will have public utilities. So I think that's important in the single-family homes. We had originally investigated drain fields at one point, but because of the sewer location, we're able to get there with the grinder pumps and force main. So I'm happy to answer any questions, technical or otherwise, about it.
Okay, thank you, Amy. We might call you back up. Appreciate it. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition of the petition? Okay, the public hearing is closed, and we'll open up questions to the commissioners. Can you pull up the, the plat again? What is that gray box to the right, to the upper right?
So that is a portion of the property. It's not included in the rezoning. They intend to, I think, gift that to one, or sell that, transfer that somehow to one of the adjoining property owners. So that is not included, right? Yeah.
So that's going to be subdivided out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, it looks like that adjoining property owner uses that as the right-of-way to get into their house. Because there's a, if you zoom in on it, you can see a driveway. I mean, well, you see it easily enough.
Are streetlights required?
I don't believe they are required. That would be a. Uh, I don't believe they are required. That would be at the developer's discretion if they're, if they're going to do it.
Amy, do you want to come up? So no streetlights are planned?
Typically, it, that's kind of a later stage thing. I mean, I, I would think that we would have one or two. It becomes down to a, a joint thing with AEP. Uh, when you put in a public neighborhood, uh, it's if, if you can get AEP to either take them over, uh, because it becomes of who's going to pay for the electricity. So typically we try to get at least one, if not two. Um, but that will come later on in the, you know, if this were to move forward, uh, we would likely want one in the cul-de-sac and one out towards the, the entrance. So at that point, we would make sure that AEP was on board and doing all the things to, to get some in the subdivision.
So this is a public city street?
Yes, it would become a public city street.
And then who pays for the electricity on, on that? The city?
Um, it becomes, it becomes public as far, like the, even the ones in my neighborhood, they have an APCO pole number. And so then, um, it becomes a, a city light or, um, however, AEP works that out with the city.
So there's no code that requires streetlights if you put in a road, a public road in the city? I always thought there was a, a, a code for it. So that, so really basically what it comes down to is whether, whether the investment is made to put it in, um, because, because AEP, the city will pay for it if, if they're put in. There's going to be no question because you're not going to put a meter and send it to an HOA, right?
Yeah, we, we usually, that has happened. If it's private, there, there's lights put in.
But public, yeah.
And then they, there's an account and that usually goes back to an HOA if it's like a, a townhouse complex or something like that. But if it's all city streets, typically we have a meeting with AEP and, and make sure that they're located how they want to get to them and, and accessibility because then it becomes, uh, a thing of easements and, and rights to, to maintain. So, um, usually we, like I said, one or two we would want just for public safety. So.
Yeah, I think it's a value. I, I, I mean, just personally, I've, you know, seen enough stuff where they say, hey, people leave your lights on, on the porch for safety. And, you know, I think, um, I think it's great that we have a neighborhood. I don't know how far we are away from like figuring out how to make lots smaller, you know, and like this is okay to have these really small lots. Uh, you know, I know sidewalks are in there, they're required probably, right?
Yes.
So yeah, I think.
But this is a very walkable style neighborhood. When you have houses that are smaller like this, um, you would want people to be able to, to walk. This is, well, this is, is not a T and D. It, it's very similar, you know, it's not a traditional, not a traditional neighborhood development.
Gotcha.
It's, it's similar in that the houses are closer together. You would want, want a permit of walkability and neighborhood interaction, uh, like Rachel said, between different demographics of ages and things like that. So.
Is the developer planning on, um, selling the lots? And I mean, I don't know if she knows, is selling them to builders or is he planning on developing?
Um, I, I think that's still up for determination.
Yeah.
You know, if we can get all the lots, I think that'll, we'll go, if we can get this rezone to get 22 lots, then we'll go from there. So.
Just one quick question. We're looking at 22 lots. What would the original number have been at the current zoning?
Um, so they've got 4.54 acres, um, times 4.35 units per acre in R2.
18 or something like that.
Times. Yeah, like 18, 19.
Okay. So not much of it.
No.
Not a lot.
No, I actually, um, years ago, Rachel, I think you were involved with the Tyrrhiana plan. And we all saw that as one of the few places the city could
Needed.
Really look towards.
Yeah.
Moving towards migrating in that area. And I'm glad to see this is the type of migration that's happening. Um, I think it's a good fit and I think that, that's a small adjustment. Uh, we're not, we're not going from R1 where, uh, the density doesn't change that much. And, uh, I, I think I, I fully support it.
And the, the land across the street where the landfill used to be is, that's planned to be a park someday, right?
Correct.
So that would be a, quite a nice amenity for these, this neighborhood.
Yeah, drove through there, um, the other day and, uh, there's some new, you know, four new construction houses on your left and was so excited to see that. And so the idea of like a new.
Aren't those his too?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the same.
Same builder, same person. Okay, yeah, they're, they're really nice looking and, um, I, it's very exciting to me to see that because of that, like.
We discussed Concord Turnpike as being one of the gateways.
Yeah.
To the city.
Right, and making it look better and be more.
It's kind of an area that was forgotten for a long, long time.
Yeah.
And so any of that redevelopment can try to help now that we have the, the way that 460 connects in.
Yeah.
Um, and with all the things that are going on out that way from 460, I think this becomes a lot more marketable for some people.
Well, those houses, they have the best view.
Well, yeah, question. Oh, it's beautiful.
At, at some point, you're between the train tracks and the river. And I'm not sure if that happens here, but that's really unusual for Lynchburg.
Right, right.
So one, I guess one last question. It really didn't have anything to do with this, but in, in our plan, you know, one of the things we talked about, and it's obvious in your plan, that wastewater is a problem. And do we have any long-range plans for actually kind of building that out?
Uh, so the water resource, Department of Water Resources does have a, a sanitary sewer master plan essentially. Um, and it is comprehensive, uh, in terms of, um, looking at, at all of the areas in the city that currently don't have sewer and, and what it would take to get to them. Um, and as you know, I think Richland Hills is, is going on now. That was one of the former areas without sewer. Um, but there are quite a number of them and, um, it's, I don't want to use the word rank, but there are, there's a list based on potential customers and, um, kind of how the math works out because, uh, essentially when you're extending sewer, the rest of the city subsidizes that. The, the other customers, uh, pay for that because it's a, what we call an enterprise fund. Um, so there is, there is a, a very long-range plan to bring sewer to all areas of the city.
Because of the pumping station you will put in.
Well, so each, so one of the things that has helped that too is that, I mean, I did CSO years and years and years ago when I first came to Lynchburg. And, and so when we went through the CSO program, you know, most of that, but that, well, that was all gravity. So that really addressed separation. Um, now that kind of everything that has been gravity is, is, you know, kind of done, you have parcels that you can't really, to, to provide this to gravity sewer, we, we'd have to cut through, you know, 47 people and ask for easements and all these things. So the fact that we can now use individual pump stations more readily to kind of make that a per lock cost and that those individual grinder pumps, and it does come with a component of education. And I've done those, one of the developments I did in Campbell County was the first that had individual pump stations. And people were just like, I don't even know what that means. And so over time, people have understood that if I want to get public sewer, I'm going to have to have my own pump station. So if I had a septic field and I had to take care of it, now I just have a pump station. So I have this mechanical thing that lets me get public sewer. So a lot of it has come with just education, even in the city's part to say, hey, we're going to allow this because that would open up some corridors for development. And also on the developer's side to say, hey, this is not so bad. We just have to educate those that are buying lots or building lots, that they're going to have to have this individual pump sh, pump station. And it's not much bigger than this podium as far as width. It goes in the ground. You can mow right over it. There is a component of, it does have to have power. So if your power goes out, you know, maybe you don't flush the toilet as much, but when the power comes back on, it'll, you know, go right to the force main. So there have been even like infill lots throughout the city that we've done, that we've put these individual pump stations on, that those lots have said undeveloped for years because they just couldn't get to the sewer. So now that the city has made, um, provisions for that, we can get up into the right of way and get over. So because this whole piece, every single home, you know, you start at the top, you're starting at the top and driving down, each one of these homes would have to have their own into a public force main. The city does not maintain the pump, so that's no cost to the city to maintain it. The power is at the individual homeowners, um, you know, their own electricity meter. So that's rolled into their bill. So the only parts that the city maintains is still just like a normal gravity line of, you know, you're coming right to the cleanout and after the cleanout, it's the homeowner's responsibility. So whether, whether you're gravity or whether you're a force main to come to that cleanout, it doesn't matter to the city, other than the main is actually a force main. So once that's taken over, this is just a pressure pipe, which is similar to water. And if something were to happen to the main, then the city would get involved at that point.
I think, um, the preserve off of Link Road has.
Yes, they have, they have several people that have the same situation, just because that's another one where you go up and down and up and down and to, to get all gravity sewer would just not be feasible. You know, it'd be astronomical in price. So.
Any other questions to have a motion?
I would make a motion to accept the proposal as, as written.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go. Good luck at city council. All right. Any other business? Rachel, do we have a meeting next in, um, a couple of weeks?
Yes. Um, you're, you should have an item for the November 13th meeting, um, on, that's on Wednesday. And then the following day, which is a Thursday, uh, we should be having your next work session for the comp plan. Be talking about healthy, safe neighborhoods and mobility chapters. So.
And that's at three?
That's at three, uh, I believe upstairs in the training room.
Okay.
So keep an eye out for those draft chapters coming your way soon.
Are you allowed to give us a heads up on what the item will be?
Uh, for next week, should, uh, sorry, for next meeting, um, I believe it's a private school.
Oh, yeah.
In a residential area.
Going in on Lee's, the Lee'sville one?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, well, if.
Make a motion, we.
Join? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?